Your order? Any additions or deletions? I've got one, but pardon.
Double pardon. I had your license.
I was saying the same thing. You drove once. Anything else? Who have approval?
Some will second.
All those that there is out.
I have.
These, the L delegations presentations, it's a nice night, so let's get into the new business. Minutes of the previous meeting. Everybody's had a chance to review those. Noted any errors or omissions? If not, do we have motion to approve?
Some will.
Seconders. All those favor approving those?
I agree.
Day is done. No business arising.
Was there a draft letter expressing an interest in the old thing? Is that something they had to do with this?
You're working on it.
That's something I'm currently working on. That time. No, I just did a favor.
Yeah.
No.
I did mention at one meeting that I took board trade and the data to them. They both felt that at this time it wasn't something they were interested in. Too many unknowns for this time, so. That's one that's been a little bit. C A O. Okay, so planning department, devising, yes, quite a month, only one development permit approved. Which was where we are at one twenty fourth Miss William Street. So. The Prince Way in Victoria? No, I just, you know, I was just thinking. Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, neither do I.
There he was, it must be.
No, down, down. Does it start down?
Yeah, okay, no. So discussions are ongoing with the developer for a new unit, four unit apartment building, resuming application for the property located. And on Second Avenue is pending and as an update, I actually do have the application and sent the application off to our planner for. So we'll be looking at a planning advisory committee in the next, probably in the next month, hopefully. This person is very done, how to get started. This is just one of the. She also talked about on King Street, another five unit apartment building. And then that leaves her one vacant lot. So basically it's up on the King, King Street, the Second Avenue, the piece that we put in, the new there, so it's gonna bear some fruit very shortly. So. The other one is Chris Malier and I have reviewed the large scale proposal. Proposal was very basic, with limited detail. They have responded to the comments requesting more specific details. And that would be the one, a very limited in what I put in my report, but apparently it's all over Facebook. It's a, well, I don't know if it's all over Facebook other than that.
Seven properties.
The Pines, the Pines on their webpage now have Pine Resort and condominiums.
Yes. Looking for investors.
Yeah, but they're looking for.
Investors.
Investors, so that's why I'm saying it's more, my understanding was this was supposed to be confidential, and that's why I'm keep it, trying to keep it confidential, but they're already sort of.
They're already promoting it.
They're already promoting something. Yeah. I had, I had, I told Tom, I had lunch with the investors last Tuesday or Wednesday, so I guess from then on they decided to put it up there, so. Yeah. So anyway, I mean, it is a good, you know, it's a very ambitious proposal that they put out. I think it's nothing long term, it's gonna be very, very good for the town. And it's assessment wise, it's gonna be very good for the town. The thing that we have to be cognizant on is, you know, what will that do to our wastewater facilities and what upgrades may be required and that. So basically, I have retained Gillen Consulting that done work for the town municipality on the new fish plant and helping with, there's one of the specialties is wastewater and that. So basically, they are gonna help us with this proposal and the application to do the review for us and to basically tell us, you know, what, what's gonna be needed in, if or any upgrades on the town system. And, you know, so basically where this is, where this is gonna be a good investment and a good project for the town. Gotta be careful, I'm not myself, the fire is for, doesn't make sense. Right?
After we're done today, I'll forward the vaccine, my current show, there is conception of the, probably the same thing you see.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I showed you after the meeting.
Building apartment, I guess it was slow there too, there was only one building permit issued, that was on three Burke Street for some renovations. Fire department, there was no report. The office of the C A O, so my vacation, I will be on vacation starting the twenty third, returning to work on the seventh of September. And during my vacation, Leslie will be the acting C A O. D B's Scott Days Festival, a modified version of the Scott Days Festival was held August sixth and ninth, and the committee feels that it was a success. And Lobster Bash Festival, so I met with a number of the committee to discuss the issuance of the special events license. And the committee has prepared a COVID nineteen plan in accordance to COVID nineteen protocols. The issuance of the special events license is contingent on organizing, on the organization having a COVID nineteen plan. I received the application for the special events license and the umbrella bidding license and am currently processing the application. I reached it, the staff sergeant Cameron discussed policing during the lobster bash due to the possibility of some other recyclists being in the area during Labor Day weekend. Staff Sergeant Cameron is on leave or was on leave until today. I did get a response from him today. Basically stating that we have not heard any from the lobster bash, however, we anticipated this event and plan on having extra members that weekend, including members of the R C and P Traffic Services. If I hear any more, I'd like to know. So the R C and P is somewhat being so much proactive and being prepared for it if that thing arises. The other issue I didn't have in my report with the lobster bash is the request for a street closure on, on Monday, the Labor Day Monday, for their show and showing. And it's not on the card, but they're only gonna have bigger dates as well. So basically what, what they are asking for is the closure of Montague Row, Water Street and Burke Street from Mount to Carrollton. And that's from eight to four on, on the Monday. But basically that's the big size envelope, and they said they're only gonna close what they need to close, but they wanted to ask for permission to go to that extent. So if, you know, if they only need to Church Street, for instance, they'll, they'll have, that'll be open to Church Street, people can walk second, first avenue or whatever. Right?
They usually do that on Sunday.
Yeah.
Monday is quieter than Sunday.
Yeah, Monday will be a quieter day. Because it's a holiday, the bank isn't open, and banks aren't open, and things like that. So, you know, banks take every holiday, and they won't say a holiday.
Yeah.
And one of the.
Church also.
No, no. In fact, church, you know, church or maybe like that. So I just wanted to bring that up, just find out whether there's any issues with the fact council or process that, that, to that permission.
I don't have any problems.
It's our first street closure of the year.
Yeah.
We have that Scott Days reward.
Good to know.
Yeah. And well, basically we'll make sure that it's advertised the best we can, on Facebook and whatever, we'll get them to advertise it as well. And try to make sure, do the best we can to get that there so the general public will know the closure of why it's closed.
Are they doing fireworks too, Tom, or maybe not either?
I'm not sure, it's Monday night or Sunday night. I'm not a hundred percent sure, I didn't see the exact, all the schedule. But I know that, you know, basically in the COVID plan that they have submitted to me, basically anything that is required, and they've got it sort of somewhat general because in case, a lot of the time, Labor Day weekend gets here, we may be in number of phase five, not in phase four, so things can change somewhat. That aside, basically whatever's important is what they're gonna have, provided by.
Can that be put on the town page? And then also on the Facebook page, the town's Facebook page? If something happened, people are looking for, that's the first place to go, to the town webpage and.
And that's, darn it.
Street.
Street under. Yes, that's what we'll, we'll, we'll put it on our Facebook page, we'll ask them to put it on their Facebook page or their website, and, and we'll do the books as well. The next item is splash pad, so I met with Sharon McAlpine in McCormick and a couple members of the New Reformed Splash Pad Association. The purpose of the meeting was to talk about a location for the splash pad. The most logical location would be close to a service area where water makes water. So the spot that was chosen was the Von and Tasson Memorial Playground. There is enough space within the area and would enhance the use of the playground. Installation of washroom facilities would not be required, users could use the facilities at the arena and pool. And the group is quickly getting organized and anxious to work on fundraising for this project. The town will be accepting donation earmarked for the splash pad and can issue income tax receipts. The group is already showing, looking at the possibility of continuing to fundraise for operating and maintenance costs of the splash pad after the splash pad is constructed. So I thought that that was, that was really good, because usually what happens is that you get groups that wanna get something built, and once they get built, they're no longer in existence and they don't wanna do any further fundraising. But this group seems to be pretty dedicated to getting the splash pad and seeing it be successful, so. Yeah, it's nice to see. They're expensive things, they are.
Yeah, that'll be one concern I've got with, I talked, well, they came and talked to me, and they, they seem to think they can do it a lot cheaper than what some other spots have. I know they're modeling it after Middleton, which was like a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but that, that's what they said between a hundred and a hundred and fifty. But I thought most of the more recent ones were about two hundred and fifty plus land.
So. It, it, it depends, it depends on the type of splash pad that it is. And basically, I think they've got their sights on saying, on not having the reusable water or recovered water. There are two, two out there, there's ones that you, you, your water comes out on the pad, and when it drains, it goes out to the sewer. And there's one that collects the water that comes and then you re-treat, treat it and repurpose it. But that's a lot more expensive, both on purchase price, but also on the operational cost as well, because you've gotta have a certified operator to treat, for treatment of that water, because basically you can't have recycled water. So that's, that's one of the things that they did talk, talk about, and they're favoring just going with, where not using recycled water, just because of the extra costs, not only capital, but in, on the own operator.
Oh, they have tested it?
Yeah.
Tested.
I mean, they, basically, yeah, I mean, they, the thing is, because even though it's a splash pad, the thing is kids can, might be drinking it or, you know.
Or whatever.
Anything, right?
Spitting and peeing.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, and the thing is, I mean, kids are kids, you know.
Yeah.
There's, they pee in the pool, so they could be peeing in the splash pad, on the splash pad, right? So.
They're fun, like I took my kids to a couple in Ontario, like, and they had to blast, but they're, they're expensive.
Yeah. Really good to see that there's a lot of community interest, and they're gonna come from the community. And basically, yes, we're probably, we'll be turning it over to the town after it's done, but, well, I like is the fact that we get enough forethought to say that, you know, after it's done, we're not gonna forget about it. Hopefully that's.
I think they have intentions of building other things as well, so I got the impression that the meeting, they were gonna continue to grow things in town for youth, so.
Yeah.
That's why they wanna keep it going.
So, next item is the modified work rate, so it's regarding today, the town's staff will be switching from option A to option B, where staff will earn a day off every second Friday. And the trial with option A has gone, gone well, so it'll be interesting to see that what dev count of option B will be, so.
Have you determined A or B at the end of the all, just by the great thing?
Well, basically, basically, I mean, meet his staff, and they're already trying to get a consensus on which one staff thought was, was the best, and try to go from there. Hopefully, you know, like, we come up with a consensus, I don't have to be the final decision maker, so. Digby stations, so the memorandum of understanding between the town, Digby and the healthcare authority for the COVID nineteen testing site has been extended until September thirtieth of this year. It's highly likely that they will be closing the testing site at that time, but subject to change, depending on how the area fares with the fourth wave. We all know it's, probably on its way.
Number's not too good, though.
Hmm?
Number's not too good.
So our visitor information center, the amount of tourists visiting the B I C has increased, especially the last week, they've seen an increase in American tourists, so, which is no surprise.
Yeah.
Border is opened up, but pretty some American tourists have made a way to dig. Derelict vehicles, equipment on town property. So basically, that was discovered that an embedded property owner had been deposited in derelict vehicles and equipment on town property. And that's pleasant, that the property contains well number five and is, is in our well field protection area. The owner of the derelict vehicles had received a letter from myself, which was also posted on the derelict vehicles and equipment, given the under thirty days to remove the vehicles and equipment. After the thirty days has expired, which will be August the twenty third, the town deemed them to be, have been abandoned, and the town will remove them and transport them to a salvage area disposal. And should the amount paid for salvage be less than the cost to remove the vehicles, the town will commit a legal action, gets the owner for recovery of the difference. Basically, that's. Anybody want a fire truck? There's a fire truck out there.
Is there?
Really?
Yeah. Little one? Big one?
No, it was, it was a pump truck.
Yeah.
Look at that.
You've got your own bird.
So that should be worth a lot of the salvage area, right?
Well, salvage, yeah, would be.
It's a good price for that.
Okay, any questions, C A O?
One question is not on here, but the family for the racket, any timeline on that, or?
So.
All's that.
Yeah. So basically, that, that's a, that's a good, good start, and I think as soon as the materials come in, the thing that, that'll, that'll come in, so. To keep, trying to keep the fire burning under the, to keep, to keep that thing moving. So hopefully we'll be in before we have to take it out for the winter. But anyway. Yeah, I did see, I saw those described last, with the Thursday, I think, five, four.
Yeah.
So that was, that was a bad, the last update that I found, yeah, that I inquired, was that, which, before we were waiting for N S P to scope it, and, so. Okay. Director of Public Works, he's not available tonight. Looks like he had a busy. Few weeks, any comments on that or any, do you got?
No, I think.
Yeah. And if anybody has any questions, I'll do my best to try to answer them, but.
I've said to you, I'm a lot, Leslie, just, there was one night where, a couple of nights where there was no lights on at all, and there was some vehicles there that worked. No one was in the, so called the county's office, and that just swayed by. They said the truck was settled on lifeless roads, they weren't too concerned, but, and now Ed's put a light in the back of the building that's there, but there was always two lights over each door on the side, so that they haven't come back on, or that's.
That, that's a B I C?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
Making notes and checking out on that, more on. And. It's black on there, yeah, the lights aren't, right?
Okay. Yeah, because I think those outside lights, the front outside lights, there is a switch inside that'll switch them off, you know, as well as, and it could be the staff are just shutting everything off from the, with the door, so. You could just have to educate them on that one on. I'll check it out tomorrow. Okay, Director of Financial Report. I think so, I was looking at it, there's this, P's going down.
P's going down for the vaccine.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I read that twice, just. Yeah, it was a catch.
Probably a clerical error, that they were charging it too much, but.
We'll get a rebate.
Yeah.
But, no, so on, on the statement of operations, obviously, this early on in the year, at this high level, it's hard to see any variances. When I look at the detail level, nothing stands out to, to date from our budget, so that's, that's the main thing. If there's something that jumps out, I can try to let the council know, but nothing is, nothing is jumping out. And again, it's worthwhile looking at just the prior year column, because we don't have our, our financial statements for the year yet, but the prior year column basically shouldn't be completed unless there's some small little adjustment in this. That shows a surplus of two hundred and twenty seven thousand, that's approximately what we thought it would be. Might be a little lower than what I initially had in my graph. And keep in mind, some of that is transferred in from reserves, and, but it's still, still well over what we transferred in, enough to fund basically the New Year's budget, which we transferred in one hundred and twenty thousand from reserves. So although it says zero on the bottom of the new budget, again, just a reminder, we transferred in almost a hundred thousand from the operating reserve, twenty thousand from our snow reserve, which is getting too big, to balance, so, so not a sustainable budget. On the rest of the report, a couple of grant opportunities, the disaster mitigation grant, the larger one, they finally brought it down from a minimum of twenty million down to a minimum of one million, which still is, is at the hour limits of what we can, what we can use. We don't have anything on the books right now that we could use it for, and they only pay forty percent. So if we had a million dollar coastal erosion project, we'd pay six hundred thousand, they'd pay four hundred thousand. So really, it's still a time just to throw it back out there with the council, like we've talked about, we want that big operating study done, and say, look at our old coastal area, spend our money and, and then have it on the books so that we can, we can fill up grants like this. It's just something to think about, this isn't a great opportunity, because it's still big and it's still only forty percent. So it's, but, something to keep thinking about. The Active Transportation Fund, federal grant, now, we've had Active Transportation grants before, they've been the protection ones, this is the feds chiming, and this is new, this is good, and hopefully we'll be able to find something that, that fits in here. The applications aren't being accepted yet, but get our eye on that one, and hopefully we can connect some trails, work on some trails, use some sidewalk to connect trail to trail, and they want, they want people to, to start using it somewhere.
Did you have talked Mountain Street, Mountain Street to Victoria, when we did that, at Light Lane, or was that within the existing footprint in the road, or? Because there's possibly there.
Uh, yeah, it's on the initial design, I know the engineering design is done, but that's.
Yeah, we did, uh, it is supposed to be a white lane one, but.
One, one side?
Yeah, they're one side.
Not the whole side.
So that, is that? Pull some of that, if you could pull some of that money towards the overall cost of the project, break it down.
Yeah. We'll look at that.
Yeah.
And, and I think that's it, other than, oh yes, I noticed that de-transfer tax, again, is, is up even more, I thought the market had cooled, but we're running hotter than last year. So we're now at about sixty thousand dollars, we're about four months in, that's usually our full annual de-transfer tax, so things are selling, buying and selling is happening.
Hellevax has less than a thirty day supply of housing, which is usually ninety days or more, sixty to ninety days or down to thirty days.
Maybe, maybe Nova Scotia's bucking the national trend, the national trend is cooling. And that's it.
Okay, any questions? Uh, my P's going down. Okay, no correspondence. New business. Yeah, they did these two pieces well, the first one, Waterfront Development Corporation, that's developed Nova Scotia. First at the Noel then, when we, they were responsible for managing the tall ships funding, and their responsibility for managing the internet file for the province. And I've been at Noel since then, met with them a few times through the port, so they had called a couple of weeks ago, said they were coming down, wanted to talk, meet with us at the port, and then said walk through town. So we walked through town, I pointed a potential site for boat launch, a potential site for access to the beach, and talked about our streetscape program, and they're, they're trying to reach outside of where they are, Hellevax, Lunenburg, and other areas, and Digby has been on their list as a potential spot to come and do some work. They don't have any money at this time, they will be having some programs come out probably next year, so this is really more just an information piece. But they said they're there for. They said they're there for advice giving at this time, so we get some questions around waterfront development, they're there to call and speak to. So out of that, that led to the facade program that we've been beating around the bush the last two or three years. They felt that, I showed them my street skate program, they said, if you're gonna do something like that, you obviously gotta do something near downtown, because they commented on our downtown being mixed, siding, shingles, annoying wires and that kind of stuff. So what I like to do is I get with Tom or somebody else from council, sit down, let's pick out all the facade programs, and Hapless has got one, Yarvis has got a huge one, Ludenberg, my home, and they all got one. See, we can design one that council would be happy with, but we don't need, we'd bring it back to committee at home and discuss, but if we could just sit down and pull all those other ones out, sit with Tom and see if these make sense. I have someone with ass somewhere, if someone else is interested, just one other person to meet once in a while.
It'd be interesting, yeah.
It's okay, we'll do that, and look at what's out there, and see whether it makes sense to us to even have one, and it makes sense to have one, just how extensive it should be, but...
I wonder if you should get, to make the, sit on that as well. Ed Moore?
Ed Moore, yeah, I, I wanna get, get involved, yeah, it's very interesting that. And the other thought process one is actually ask Jeff Gushu from CEO from Yarvis, because they have, they have one, they have a main, they have a major one, they're hundreds of thousands of dollars, that's why you're seeing what's happening on Front Street of Yarvis. Yeah, okay, well, the council doesn't mind, it'll be myself. Ed Moore is one that's been the last three or four years trying to get us to look at something like that, and council terminal, obviously after we've heard the CEO all the time, tell us whether we're headed in the right direction or not. Okay, affordable housing, that's an interesting part.
The wheel turns again. I said to go to, it would be a rock, just basically Trish was with Tri-County Housing had taken over the coordination of affordable housing in the Tri-County area, and by way of doing that, she sort of added to her own work pile, and everybody else who's with that sort of group is all working, her expression is off the side of the desk, because they have, you know, not really their bailiwick, but that's kind of how it fell, because when Nova Scotia Housing shut down due to COVID, pulled all their workers back, their coordination was gone. So now, Trish tried for a little while to get some co-chairs, but just everybody else has got too much other plates as well, but we effectively, we've effectively lost any coordination in the Tri-County area that we had. So in that meeting, there was, in our group, the warden from Claire Arvall, who wasn't in that particular meeting, but he was recording interviews. His acute problem with affordable housing in Arvall apparently is even worse than ours. So between Natalie Smith from the town of Yarvis and myself, we bandied the idea back and forth that perhaps if there was willingness, just to even coordinate between the municipalities in southwest Nova Scotia, to have a once in a quarter meeting with Zoom, or send somebody from council, or the mayors, or the wardens, or however it would happen, but just to try and coordinate the efforts that, because right now, in Digby, we're sort of taking off, we've got an interested group that's moving ahead and making some plans and, and actually doing some things. Arvall's got some new interest as well, the town of Yarvis is not, Claire, there's nothing happening with Claire now either, but if we could even just share the information of the ideas that everyone's doing, it would help the whole, whole area. So I just wanted to know if there was any...
The last group, Wester Soul, I'm just getting blasted.
Yeah.
I last time, well, I tried to sign it last week, too. I think all the last was, couldn't go there last week.
That's part of the problem too, is that she made the Zoom leak, and that's happened several times before, it changes at the last minute, because she changed something with Google and then sent the information out, and...
Yeah, it could be that. So, but again, like there was thirty, forty, fifty people on that list, it was just two couples. You mentioned regional meetings, we usually, through our UNSM, or FSMG, GTL, whatever, we, we have regional, we have, we have had regional meetings just this last year, not to the, oh, right. But I, yeah, it probably, does it make sense that we work from here to Arvall, or do we work here with Claire and Digby, or just the two, what's?
Does it make sense from my thinking when it comes to grant money and coordination of trying to build projects, and if one group does some design work, why should the rest of those groups pay for the same work over there? It could just be shared, you know, that kind of thing is what I think. And the whole question was, if there is an interest, then we perhaps should draft a letter to send to those other municipalities to ask?
Yeah, we can send it to the mayors, the wardens, and ask if there's interest, and then under that, a committee could be struck. It does, the committee doesn't need to be mayors and wardens.
Right.
No.
Yeah, you guys have enough to do with this.
Yeah, you wanna write, just see if there's interest, we can write the, Arvall, the Digby, so that's about one, two, six units? Six units. Yarvis, they don't get interested, but, yeah, we give my letter to the mayors, the wardens, those areas, yeah, it'd be six, seven including ourselves.
Yeah.
Three in Dugan, three in Yarvis.
That's why you guys were just taking...
Yeah, yeah.
See if there's interest there.
Yeah, we could call a affordable housing committee. Okay, well, everybody says we get Tom to draft a letter and send it to him and then go. I was listening to the news, well, everybody, all, all the parties are talking about affordable housing, we can't find for them. One, one coalition, Hellevax, Hellevax needs twenty-five thousand.
Thousands dropping the bucket.
Exactly, so they, they were saying nine hundred or something.
Yeah.
So that's a drop in the bucket, yeah.
That's not an easy case.
No.
We have made a little progress just in, in pricing. We found out that container is cost prohibitive, believe there are, sixty-five hundred dollars, plus tax, plus delivery, just for a twenty-foot container, which are backward, because you can't get any anywhere. So if you think about building a traditional stick-built building, you could put a foundation thirty by thirty for less money than ten thousand, though. You may as well build a stick-built, and then you don't have the problem where to put it, try to fit anything in, yeah.
Kind of hot commodity, that's why, everybody wanted a container built.
It's the lowest, the greatest thing, yeah.
Yeah, okay, well, we'll do that, we'll talk with you, just a letter, if there's interest. The mayors and wardens can have, we can have a Zoom call about it, and then go, back to that term quickly. Accessibility advisory committee membership. Leslie, talk. Turn that over to Wesley, who's been our active staff member, if he wants, on the hand, special, uh... Mr. Foley.
So, so I reached out to Tyler this morning, just to find out where we were on accessibility committee, that we've done all those advertising, tracking, membership from the public, and he's had two date, he's only had two applicants. One barely fits by this week, and the other one is fine, but he's wondering if, if our council might have an appetite to reduce, because when we first talked about it, we committed through, the council committed to two members of council, and four members of the public, and two members from municipal council. So if we reduce that back to one, and we reduce the number of public to two rather than four, we can actually begin the process of the planning, so.
Because we're not re-inviting anything, because...
Yeah, we're gonna, yeah, we're gonna use like the design concept from, I think Wolf Phil did a design concept, mainly use that, but we still have to develop our own plan.
Yeah.
So that's the work that needs to be done first, and we can't do that with the formation of the committee, so.
Very difficult, citizens law.
Very.
Very difficult.
So is that just a policy change or?
Basically, I mean, council, do not, by motion, agree to the committee at that structure. So basically, it was mean council, and I don't think Tyler is taking this to his council either.
No, no, this is, this is...
So he's gonna, but I guess him and Leslie are just brainstorming, trying to say, how do we get this thing done, right? And that can keep us going, because we are required to have about fifty percent of the...
Yeah, I got it printed here.
Citizen membership, so if we reduce council is what we want, you know, that brings it down.
Yeah.
Unless somebody knows today or tomorrow, two citizens in town would be interested, but that still leaves...
I mean, we, we reached it to the one that we thought was illogical, but he's not, not interested.
Zero interest.
I mean, the reason that we reached it, because he was helpful with our town hall project, with accessibility, with the ramps and stuff like that, he gave us some, and actually, he came and sort of said, well, this is, this is why, their own ramp that we had, he said, this is why I can't get down hall with my machine, right, with my scooter, and so that's why we thought, you know, I think, there's a difference between having him come and say, oh, you know, there's these things, but sitting on a committee, I don't think he's, he enjoys sitting along meetings.
So you want us, we did that by motion?
That, that was it, by, by council.
Council, so we...
Yeah.
Yeah.
We could amend, well, I'll have to...
We amend the reset.
Ascend that motion and make a new motion, and anyway, we just wanted to bring it up tonight, I think just basically the, the council heats it up, and, and see whether, you know, there was objections from council on making that change, that there was, we can work with it with Tyler, and so that maybe we can put a recommendation that'll be going to both councils at that time.
We have some timelines on this, too.
Yes.
Yeah, so we have to, yeah, so we need you. Yeah, bring that to council, we can discuss it then.
Yep.
You do.
Good.
British Home Children. Didn't we do this, didn't we do this last year or?
You hear me. We had a presentation that came.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think at that time we changed, yeah.
It wasn't a huge crowd here, but there was, there were people there that...
So, so basically, when we dropped us off this morning, I asked him, I said, so how do you anticipate you're gonna like the light out, so he's gonna be the spotlight, right? I couldn't see, especially for two and a half hours, somebody spending probably six hours trying to put lights on, right? So basically, it will be the spotlight, the different colored spotlight showing on each side of the, of the light end, so they can put within minutes, I guess, or half an hour before, and then when it's done, they can dismantle it and away we go, so.
I was, I was down to this last time, and I think that's what they may have last time, studio ball, etc.
Yeah.
Did a little music and a prayer, it was nice.
So, I guess, just, is that something that we actually need to take officially to council or is it maybe your, your...
I'm the president.
Yeah, no, I...
I have no problem with it.
Yes.
The cost is great, but...
Yeah, it's, depends, you probably agree the difference, yeah. Anyways, I need to ask, is a power back in the land? Should be, I know that I talked to electrician, talked to electrician, probably almost a month ago, and he was, they were working that, to get the light back on, because I know, I know it's good the other day, it was on, maybe just the switch inside's been thrown.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. It's a light pressure from my bedroom up in the light. But cheap, I would cheap, I don't like them. Okay, now I just talked directly to us. Okay, we're gonna have a most likely camera? Oh, double parking, sorry, Peter, you were...
Yeah. I have the Yarvis P's up, recently ticketed W Park, double parking, I go down through town now, you can see, especially on, you and I heard, the trucks double parked, they're back on parking on the sidewalks and stuff, and this was their, this came to council because of their concerns, and nowadays, officers, well, they've left it there.
Well, it was a new officer that committed down. I had, still in the detachment, but been redesigned, it's the, Hazel, the schools, and so, well, we can...
Bring it up at the next piece of eyes.
Yeah, I could say, yeah.
Say that, Peter, because I have somewhat complaint to be at the edge of first avenue. There's a vehicle in front of the Lo-Hazey Redlands.
Which parks?
Not even tempted to get off the street, it's on the street, most afternoons, a lot of evenings, where there's more than a few room in the yard. I asked council to deal if they could have a look at, they're still doing it.
Bring it up at the advisory.
Yeah.
Because if it's parked over there, it should be tempted. Well, especially parking on sidewalks, I mean, actually, as we have, as I asked there, are, we have infrastructure and...
The thing is, if that vehicle is, is parked there, especially within our business hours, Bruce can ticket that car, because he's, he's, he's too careful. Part of the motor vehicle act that he's allowed to enforce, it's part, part of the ticket, right? He can't do any moving violations on the motor vehicle act that he can do parked, not just limited to the two hour parking, it's any, any legal parking. So, basically, if we know that it's happening through business hours, then Bruce can address it, otherwise, it would be our champagne that needs, that, that sometimes it's difficult to get them to do the patrol, but I think it's, it's a time that we may have to have this chat with them.
Yeah, I was just gonna mention that, we, we had some complaints in the last few days about noise, so, number of neighbors, today I went to visit the people that were, had the, the victims of the noise, but that looks like that's been resolved, but Tom and I both agree, it's probably time to have a meeting with the staff sergeant, point out all the stuff that's going on, and see if we got slack on, so, so we'll call them in to have a chat with them. But bring it up at police advisory, too.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
The time, because I think if they're not hearing anything, right? Then they're just gonna, they don't wanna do what they're, what they're doing, and I mean, they, little more of nine hundred grand a year for policing, you know, and yeah, that's what, we need to have some sort of service, and, I mean, the relate, the complaints that we got la, last week about noise, unfortunately, Bruce is on vaca, was on vacation, so he couldn't address them, but our backup for that is the Yarvis P, always with, by us, right? And they did apparently go after some, some persuasion, and, and again, the staff sergeant was also on vaca, on leave, so, you know, I didn't really have anybody to call and, and do it.
I guess, would that have happened? Well, I guess it wouldn't be the right hours. It, it's happened probably four weeks ago, and I haven't seen a lot of it lately, but there have been people overnight camping at Vic and at the McLaughlin.
Yeah, there was somebody, they said last week to camp, they were like, let's come off the ferry or something, bits of town, or...
There's a, there's down the street, there's a campground.
Yeah.
Right?
And those are just people hitchhiking, find a spot, they're comfortable. So, then, the other, other thing as well with the double parking... So, that's the other thing as well with the double parking, especially during, during the day. Bruce is back next week, so you can down the date a little bit more, or can, can he get you tickets as well for double parking? Right, cause it is violation of the, under parking.
Yeah, there's no, for the new ones, there's no loading and unloading in the street. Uh, it's been happening downtown for a million years, because we don't have a back alley or a front alley. But when this new officer walked in, he was techneating the courier services, the tractor trailers, the taxis, and my phone was lit up.
So I mean, I mean, technically, if they can get part of the vehicle off, off of the road, right? Into a parking spot, even though they can't fit, if they can back, the back end, then next to the sidewalk, and even if the front is that into the travel lane, then that, that's technically fine, because they're tempted to get off of the, the road. But when they just blatantly stop in the line of traffic and stop and, it wouldn't be so bad if uh, I don't know, they get out of their vehicle and it was especially a courier, they run, deliver packs, they're back in maybe five minutes, they're back. But, you know, some of them trucks are unloading and, and I know that, you know, we had issues.
Where they pull over in the handicap spot for the back of Nova Scotia facing the wrong way.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we do the stick up, I'll do that.
One, one thing too, Peter, with the double parking loading, both the nothing fancy?
Yeah.
Or putting a sign up there, seven to nine, be loading zone in the morning? That's where we had a problem, so that'll not cause any problems with.
Yeah, basically, yeah, we're uh, talked with Ed this afternoon and we're gonna look and see. Cause basically, what my understanding, what the real issue is, is where people uh, park where he usually marked off for his truck that was coming for a lift. He said nothing fancy, right, early in the morning, and usually it's anywhere from seven thirty to eight or some, eight thirty or something like that. Uh, there's people that park there all night and they're still there, right? And so, get a, the idea I think is to post two or three things, that it's a loading zone and no overnight parking in, in these spots from, you know, from whatever time until whatever time, and then the, a free for all parking and any the rest of the time.
Cause uh, when Bruce comes back, it might be a good time to, because I don't think a lot of people have realized that the spot on the corner in front of Fancy Jewors is now handicapped. I see a lot of vehicles without even the sticker of the mirror.
I can confirm that, uh, most times that I come back from lunch, I check, I'll look and see, and it's generally, it's not.
And if they park, they need to accept the responsibility of the ticket, because it's pretty, it's bright blue.
Well, they figure they can run in quick.
For the place and.
Yeah.
I just think people are lucky, they just, I'm like, parked there for years.
Yeah. Well, what I was saying the other day, me, about parking.
Oh, yeah, the nineteen sixty-five thing?
The councillor of nineteen sixty-five came to my office, you probably all went ahead and heard the story. He came to my office years ago, he's not well now, and he said, what did you talk about at council? And I said, we talked about parking. He said, Ben, we were fighting about parking in nineteen sixty-five, you wasted my tax dollars, why bother about parking today? He was on council that day. But it's always, it's.
Parking comes up all the time.
Yeah. Okay, then we are now need a motion to move camera, so we can kick everybody out, sound proper. Is that my house? I'm taking my house.
Don't want it.
I wish you would, I could spend money on it. Do we have a motion to move camera?
No votes.
Is that good?
Seven.
All of the favors say aye?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?